Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Abington's Board of Commissioners' regular public meeting for Thursday, November the 8th, 2018, and may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Smaller?
Here.
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 Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is classified in the United States of America and to the public which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no Board President announcements for this evening at this time, and there are no presentations. So with that, I'd like to open the meeting for public comment on agenda items. Please disregard that last statement. Thank you, Vice President Klein. At this time, I'm going to ask President, Vice President Stephen Klein for approval of the minutes and the consent agenda.
Did you ask for public comment?
Just one minute.
Solicitor Clark, so we have a consent agenda. There's a question because we do not have committee meetings, how we want to handle public comment related to the consent agenda and also related to the individual items outside of the consent agenda. Could you please advise us how to go forward?
It has been our practice when we don't have committee meetings that residents are permitted to comment on each individual agenda item, just like it was, we were at a committee meeting.
Okay.
Since we have our new structure of the consent agenda, and since we have, it looks as if we have four items on the consent agenda, I think it would be appropriate to ask if anyone has comment on those four items, and then if they don't, as we move into unfinished business, then we should take public comment on each individual item.
Right.
So with that, before I read the consent agenda, we, on your agenda item, there are four items, as President Lucker had mentioned. One item is Item A, which is the minutes. Item B is FC02, which is a motion to approve the Clearing Fund Deferred Revenue Expense Activity as it's listed on the agenda. Item C is FC03, 101618, Motion to Approve the Advance and Travel Expense Activity for September 2018 as it's listed on the agenda. And Item D, FC04, 101618, Motion to Authorize an Expenditure from Miscellaneous Expenses in Payment, in the Permanent Improvement Fund Account Number listed in the amount of $77,513 to be distributed among the five volunteer fire companies. Those are the items in the consent agenda. At this point, if, with your permission, we'll ask for public comment on just those agenda items, as mentioned by the solicitor. All of the other items on the agenda will be, the public will be granted for comment after each agenda item.
Right.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane, I just want to understand this better. So my understanding with the consent agenda was that when items came up in their committee meetings, there wasn't any argument over them, nobody felt like they needed to see them again, so they went on to the consent agenda. But when we don't have a committee meeting, who was it decided that nobody had any questions or anything on these? That's what, when there are no committee meetings, how would you even put a consent agenda together?
Well, you had a committee meeting, correct?
No. Well, all of the finance items were discussed in a committee meeting.
Right.
Oh, they all were?
Right.
All the finance items were discussed in the committee meeting.
Okay, I didn't realize, I thought finance also didn't have a committee meeting when the, okay.
Finance had a committee meeting.
All right, that explains it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yep. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is Items A through D, and so move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners, staff, residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
That completes the consent agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Ben Sanchez for unfinished business as Chair of the Administrative Code and Land Use Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item of unfinished business tonight, this is ACL02, 11818, previously ACL3, 101118, and this is a motion to approve or reject the land development application for Family Dining Incorporated, Burger King, for the expansion for a playground and second drive-through lane.
Is this the best place for us to stand?
Yes.
My name's Amy Farrell. I'm the attorney with Kaplan Stewart. We're the attorneys for Family Dining. We were before you, before the Planning Commission, and then in discussion in committee with the Commissioners with respect to this application. This application is currently before you, the proposal is, this is the Burger King that I think you're all familiar with, at Edge Hill Bradfield in Easton. It is about 4,231 square feet, existing within 96-seat restaurant and a single lane drive-through. The proposal is to modify that drive-through to be a dual-lane drive-through, which will help, obviously, with some congestion and moving folks through, for a about 744-square-foot internal playground addition associated with that, and then some reconfiguration of the parking. We were before the Planning Commission, and then again, as I said, we were before you previously. As you'll recall, this was originally submitted in May of 2018. We resubmitted in September with revisions to address Township Engineer Review comments. That's where we were the last time that we spoke to you, and if you'll recall, the issue in particular that we were discussing was whether or not sidewalks should be added along Bradfield Road. There's some PennDOT work that's being done in that vicinity, and so the thought, the Township Engineer's suggestion, in connection with the requirements of the Land Development Ordinance, were that sidewalks should be extended along Bradfield. We did go out, we took a look at that, we priced it, as you'll recall. We also were very concerned about the substantial amount of mature landscaping along Bradfield that would have to come down in order to do that work. So what we did was, we came back with a modified proposal. Those plans were submitted October 8th of this year. They show that portion of sidewalk along Bradfield. However, our proposal remains that we would be requesting a waiver to not do that sidewalk, in exchange for which the developer would post $25,000 fee in lieu to the Township's general fund to be used for sidewalk in off-site locations. We think there are probably other places in the township where you'll get better sidewalk improvement than you might get in this location, and not at the expense of substantial landscaping. So our primary proposal this evening is that we would like to move forward with an approval as to all of the waivers as originally requested. In the alternative, if it's not something that the Commissioners are comfortable with, we would ask, we would move forward with an approval as to all of the waivers except the sidewalk. We'll then price that sidewalk, and Burger King will have to make a determination as to whether or not they're going to proceed with the project, depending on where those numbers come in. So our proposal and our preference would be that we not put the sidewalk in at Bradfield, we give the Township the money to do that work somewhere else, that maybe you're already doing some other work, where you can get a little more use out of it, and then that way, we would have all of the waivers that were originally requested. We have, of course, the engineer here this evening that can walk through any of that in more specificity if that's necessary. We're happy to answer any other questions that you have. Everything else with respect to the Township Review Letter has already been addressed, or as it will comply. There's just the waivers that were outlined in the Township's summary.
Commissioner Sanchez, did you have any other questions of the applicant, or did you want to turn it over to the Commissioners for questions?
Yeah, let's turn it over to the Commissioners for questions.
Okay. All right. Are there any? Commissioner, speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, just so I understand, I mean, given, obviously, there was a significant back-and-forth last time about the sidewalk issue, Burger King hasn't, doesn't have even a ballpark figure as to what those sidewalks might...
So we, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were answering. So they have started to price that. When you talk, as soon as you talk about taking out all of those mature trees, you're actually digging into some pretty substantial grade changes along there and that road widening. We're at around $50,000, we think, as a starting point. That number could go up from there. So it's quite a substantial amount for them to consider doing on a project of this size. It just doesn't necessarily all come out in the wash in terms of being an effective use of dollars on this site to do the other improvements that are being proposed. And that's why the, our thought is, if you can use that, you know, some of that money elsewhere to better serve the sidewalk program that you have in the Township, that that may be a better use of those funds. We save the trees on site, we keep that mature landscaping in place. The other two street frontages do have sidewalks, so we're not talking about a development that has no sidewalks. We're just talking about this strip along Bradfield that maybe doesn't make the most sense at this point.
And that offer again was $25,000?
Twenty-five.
Thank you.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Gillespie?
Sure, it's, since it is my ward.
Yeah.
And I really want to see the improvements to the Burger King. I think that will be wonderful. I am not in favor of that sidewalk there because of the mature trees. We're always trying to save trees. I hear that quite often here, and so I, I know it's a triangle. I don't know how many people really know it. It has, it has a stairway at the corner that was with the old Hilltop Inn, so, and most of the kids, or high school kids, go through the Burger King anyway. I've watched, I've really tried to keep my eye on it recently to see what goes on there. And personally, I think when we, we have an economic development committee that is working hard to bring business to this township. We're trying to improve businesses. We have for the businesses that are not in good shape, and you are working to improve the Burger King. And I think it just, how can we ask people to come to this township, and then when they go to improve something, we add on to it? You know, here's more money, you have to do this. I think in this situation, if it was a good area to do a sidewalk, but it's not, I mean, it really is not, so I am, I would approve it without the sidewalk.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, from the start, frankly, I've been disappointed that the sidewalks weren't there from 30 years ago, and then the trees would be mature. I see, you know, kind of the problem you're in now, but there was some other talk about looking at whether the street could be made one-way in one direction and wider, and the sidewalks could be extended out. Was any of that investigated?
I can certainly have Gary speak to that, more specifically, the art engineer. I know there were some conversations about what PennDOT is looking to do in that area. There's a lot of PennDOT work that's been proposed for there, so he's taken a pretty hard look at most of that, I think. Do you want to go through that?
Good evening. Gary Tilford, Charles Shoemaker Engineers. What's happened in the areas?
Mr. Tilford, could you come to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Thought that one was working. As you, as you probably know, PennDOT has a project underway, or about to go underway for Edge Hill Road and Tyson Avenue. Edge Hill Road is going to be rebuilt, and part of that rebuilding is the intersection of Bradfield Road and Edge Hill. The plans that we have from PennDOT show a 22-foot-wide cartway for Bradfield Road, extending adjacent to this Burger King property for about 50 feet beyond the intersection. That 22-foot width is established on the, say, the north side of Bradfield Road, or the opposite side of Bradfield Road from Edge Hill, which is currently 22-feet-wide curb on both sides. So what we propose to the Township is a modified plan, not one too strict to Township standards, which would be a 30-foot cartway, but we propose to, if, if the Board approves this with the curb and sidewalk as we propose it, it would be a 22-foot width, it would match the PennDOT width, the sidewalk be immediately adjacent to the curb, four-foot sidewalk, and then a retaining wall to make up the difference in elevation. So the, we're asking for, regardless of which way you approve it, all the same waivers, with the exception of maybe curb and sidewalk. If the curb and sidewalk goes in, that waiver drops out. The other waiver related to street, street right-of-way width and street widening would still, that waiver would still be valid in either, either scenario. So your initial question was?
Right.
Just if you refresh my memory.
It was about, there was also talk of, some talk of one, maybe looking at that street being one-way, being made one-way in one direction.
Yeah. With, with the involvement of PennDOT and the traffic that goes, extends beyond this tract, we did not look into, or just, or look at the possibilities of one-way traffic. Bradfield Road is two-way now, and with Edge Hill Road changing to a one-way direction, you know, that's something that your traffic engineers would have to look into. But even, even so, as proposed, it's 22-foot-wide, two-way road, similar to identical to what's on Bradfield Road on the north side of Edge Hill Road that exists today.
Can I, can I just make one comment? The Edge Hill Road project, Edge Hill Road is going to be one-way to Bradfield, stops there. Okay, so it doesn't really involve Bradfield, just to clear that up.
Commissioner Sanchez, Commissioner Schreiber has a question.
I just want to make sure I understand this. So I am in favor of sidewalks there. I appreciate what our, what the Ward Commissioner, and I normally would go along with the Ward Commissioner, but having been on that stretch many minutes, like almost every day I'm there, and I've, I know people walk along there quite a bit, and I've almost hit people, I think I said this at the last one, because people walk into the street. Excuse me. So I want to make sure that I'm understanding that you do have a second proposal or idea or something, and that's to have sidewalks, but there's smaller sidewalks? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. So the plan that was submitted in October shows sidewalk along there. That sidewalk and curb is immediately adjacent to the street, and it is not as wide as Township's specs. So it does not meet all of Township's specs, even as proposed as a sidewalk, because there's just not enough room there.
And with the smaller ones, the same trees have to come out and all that?
Trees have to come out, the grade has to be cut into, right. So all of that is part of the sidewalk proposal.
The smaller sidewalk.
And that's the smaller sidewalk, correct.
Okay.
And again, that's why we think, on balance, there's probably a better place to use that money and put those sidewalks in versus...
Just a lot of places that people walk with the miniature golf there, and now, I think there'll be even more people walking with you, putting in a playground and things like that. So I think the foot traffic's actually going to go up, not down, right there. So that, personally, that worries me. So, thank you.
Commissioner Klein, and then Commissioner Rothman.
The Edge Hill project, is that one-way portion, the Edge Hill, is that going to have sidewalks after PennDOT's project is complete?
Yes. Yes.
So Edge Hill Road will have sidewalks? So the gap in the sidewalks will be this small piece of Bradfield?
Correct.
So I agree with Commissioner Schreiber. We've been talking about this for years, for a couple of years now, about not putting in, not allowing sidewalk waivers, and I have to differ with Commissioner Gillespie. This is not an add-on. This is part of our subdivision of Land Development Ordinance. It has been for a long time. So not, not giving the waiver is actually a subtraction. Requiring the sidewalks is a, is a requirement of the subdivision of Land Development Ordinance, so it's not an add-on. I believe we should continue to promote walkability and, and require the sidewalks to go in. And the fact that you're offering $25,000 when the expense is 50, I don't even understand the trade-off in the in lieu. So I think the sidewalks should go in. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rothman, and then Commissioner Veigh, then Commissioner Gillespie.
I agree with what Commissioner Klein just said, so I'll save that spiel, but do we have some sort of image of what you were just describing? Is that, is that what it is right there? Is it? Because I was just a little confused in what, in picturing what you're proposing.
Is that the yellow road here?
Yes.
Bradfield Road? This is the section that does not currently have sidewalk. These are the areas where the trees are. So the yellow would be a proposed sidewalk.
Let me stop you for a second, because I think you can use your finger through there and everyone...
Lay it down. Yeah, lay it down.
I'll be able to see it from here.
Thanks.
Now we got to do it backwards.
Yeah, take your time.
So now if you point out it, they can see on screen.
So again, Bradfield Road in this location, the yellow is indicating a potential new sidewalk. Edge Hill Road is along here, the pink lines on Edge Hill Road illustrate why it's proposed by PennDOT as far as road widening. Bradfield Road being a 22-foot road, if this plan's approved, the curb would extend and remain 22, and take her back in to the existing curb. Likewise, the purple line just shows what a retaining wall location would be needed to pull this off, and there'd be three large trees that would definitely need to come out to, to build it.
I'll just add that while I'm a huge environmentalist and love trees, I'm very concerned about us not staying committed to wanting sidewalks, and am also in favor of there being sidewalks there, with all due respect to the points you've made. It's, it's something I believe we've committed to, and that I'm certainly committed to. Thank you.
Commissioner Veigh.
So I've been to that Burger King since I was in high school. It's been a long time, and with all due respect to the property owners, I mean, there has been a whole lot of improvement made there. As, you know, the neighboring Ward Commissioner, I really want to see that improved. I feel respect to Township's policy of adding sidewalks wherever we can, but it's not like there is no way to get to the other corner without having to walk on the sidewalk. You walk up Easton Road, you make a left on Edge Hill, and you're back to Bradfield. If you want to take a shortcut and not walk on the sidewalk, I can't, I mean, I'm, that's not the most defensible position. This project, I think, is important for Glenside. I want to see this improved. I would support it without a waiver. There are other places where we can do sidewalks which actually need them. This is not an area where we petition is on, like, can't get, get to the other corner without using a sidewalk. So I'm just not sure the policy here is best applied.
Thank you. Commissioner Gillespie.
I agree. Truthfully, we want to see that Burger King improved. And to me, to put this on somebody because they're doing improvements inside their property, you know, it's not like they're coming out and they're inside their property trying to improve, and then you tell them, well, if you're going to improve, you have to put in sidewalks. Again, why do we have an Economic Development Committee? Why do we have that whatever Property Committee, Commissioner?
Vacant Property Board. The Burger King is fortunately not vacant.
Well, we don't want it vacant either, and the way it looks, it needs improvement. And to put this on them, I just think is so wrong. It's, they're staying inside their property. They're not extending out. If they were, I'd say, hey, you know? But they're not. They're just trying to improve the property. So I approve it without a waiver, for sure.
Commissioner Thompson.
The sidewalk that you're proposing in that image, what's the width of that sidewalk again?
It's four feet from back of curb.
And what's the standard width in our neighborhoods? Is it about four foot?
It is four feet.
So it's a...
PennDOT's more current standards of five feet on...
But as far as our residential neighborhoods, it's a four-foot, it's almost, it's what we're used to, living in this community.
What's currently on Bradfield Road now.
Okay. I'm in favor of pushing to get the sidewalks. I love the shade trees, they're a part of the identity of that, that small intersection. But honestly, you're putting a playground at this location, you're putting a playground here across the street from an elementary school, and we have a residential neighborhood on the other side of it. So I, you know, I, I would prefer to see the sidewalks.
Excuse me, isn't the playground enclosed?
Inside, yeah.
Isn't it closed?
It is an interior for parents that come in, like at the...
But it's still a destination for children.
And not that age. If they're going by themselves, their parents need some help, I mean, really.
There is a school across the street.
Commissioner Thompson, are you complete, finished?
Yes.
Commissioner Zepone, and then Commissioner Bowman.
Living in that area for 35 years, there's never been sidewalks there, and you're the Ward Commissioner. Did you meet with your residents? Are they okay with it?
No, they don't, they don't want the trees taken down.
Okay. So for 35 years, there's never been sidewalks there. School's been across the street, people been going in and out of Burger King, so...
Nobody's been hit.
I don't see a problem with it.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of any sidewalk waiver there. I'm not going to shed any tears for Burger King or the people that own that Burger King. It's a very busy restaurant. It's not going anywhere, it's not closing. They won't, they can do what they want, but I wouldn't be in favor of a sidewalk waiver.
Commissioner Myers, thank you.
Thank you. I am certainly not a fan of what I consider holding a business hostage to make improvements that, as Commissioner Sanchez said, should have been made 30-some years ago, but obviously that wasn't being done then. There are many, many areas in this township where sidewalks are desperately needed, more than this. The Ward Commissioner is not in favor of it. I think that with the improvements that are being made to Edge Hill, that sidewalks later could be looked at, worked out in some way, but I don't think it's a good message to businesses that if you want to improve your property or your building, don't, because you're going to be made to do something that costs an extreme amount of money. I think there's another way to accomplish this. And traditionally, and customarily, we have gone with the Ward Commissioner, and I understand that people that were working for a walkability through the township, but I can give you an area that desperately needs a sidewalk and probably isn't going to get one. And so I hope that we don't go against the Ward Commissioner.
Okay. Commissioner Brodsky, and then Rothman.
So what alternatives do you propose?
Well, I didn't, I didn't think, and it's not my ward, I don't think it's a bad idea to look into one-way. I certainly don't think that's Burger King's decision. I think that that's the Ward Commissioner, the neighbors, and our decision. I don't think it's a bad idea, but again, I don't live there, and I don't travel that road a lot. I do go to that Burger King once in a while, but nevertheless, I don't like making this contingent on Burger King being able to improve their property. That is exactly what we want our businesses to do. That, that's why we don't have a lot of blight in Abington Township, and I think that we need to encourage our businesses and help them do improvements.
So my question remains, what alternatives have you proposed?
My, my alternative is to look at different options, but not hold Burger King back, and one of the options is the one-way street. Work with the Ward Commissioner on somehow, I mean, we're asking them to possibly put in a sidewalk that is not within code, the width is not within code, just to put a sidewalk in? I'm sorry, I don't, I just don't agree with that. I would be happy if they're permitted to proceed with their improvements, to be part of any committee to work this out, and it would not be a bad idea to even talk to PennDOT. We're obviously getting a, a money, I don't know what, I don't want to call it a gift, whatever you want to call it, and maybe we're using that, it could be made to work out in conjunction with the improvements on Edge Hill Road.
Commissioner Rothman.
I'm absolutely sensitive to the fact that we want to encourage economic development. I think we all do. But I'm just as committed to public safety, and that, you know, we do have multiple things that we need to look at every time that we're voting on something. I mean, this isn't an easy decision for me in that sense. But with that said, I do think that we can accomplish part of what our goal, or one of our goals, of walkability and safety by having the appropriate sidewalk without, without a waiver. So, I mean, you know, I don't know how this proceeds, or, you know, it seems to be time-sensitive, but without... So, I mean, you know, I don't know how this proceeds or, you know, it seems to be time-sensitive, but without... My take is that we could have had some more alternatives to this, rather than it just being said that this is too expensive. Because that, you know, I'm sensitive to that, but that's not really something that compels me in saying, you know, we don't feel like spending the extra money. I know you're not saying it in that way, but ultimately, that's what it comes down to. So I'm conflicted, but like I said, I'm leaning towards not voting for that to proceed in that regard with the sidewalk waiver.
Okay, any other comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Gillespie does will be the final comment.
I really, really want to see the improvements there. And I'm not sure that if I, if it was my business, I would, those improvements could cost... Who knows what the other part's costing, but why should I have to take on that other expense outside of my property because I'm improving my property? And as Commissioner Myers said, we're trying to encourage people to keep their properties up and take care of them. And this Burger King does need to be, needs some work. And I just think it's just not the right thing to do for business in this township. There are so many ways to get in around and walk, and we know not many people walk anymore. I know we're encouraging walkability, but I watch the kids being picked up at the school and the tie-up in traffic and all that other. And I just, it just really concerns me that we're putting this on this business who wants to improve. So again, I approve it without the waiver.
Okay, we'll go with Commissioner Schreiber, then Commissioner Klein, and then Commissioner Spiegelman. And then that would be it.
I have a question here because I just heard that this is time-sensitive. I'm not sure if that's true or not. Certainly, all the arguments are very compelling that everybody has made, and I care quite a bit about both the trees, the economic development, if there's another way around this. If you want to, you know, take it back to the drawing board, I don't know that we have all the information, you know. Now I'm hearing maybe committees could form. So I don't know if that's, if it is time-sensitive, we can't table it then.
Right. I think the answer is it's still time-sensitive, but given...
Okay. So if it's time-sensitive, then yes, I cannot be in favor of it.
So this project has been in one form or another in the township moving its way through for about a year. So they are at a point where they need to make a decision about whether they're moving forward or not. So if the, I mean, I think as I said at the start, I think there's two ways to go, and I know there's more comment, but I just wanted to kind of come back to that since you asked the question.
Yes.
One is that our request, obviously, is that the waivers would be granted, including the sidewalk waiver, in exchange for the contribution to the Township's general fund that you could use towards sidewalk elsewhere. That would be our preference. The alternative, if you're not inclined to do that as a majority tonight, would be to, we would be requesting that you would approve it without the waiver, which means that your approval would be contingent on the sidewalk going in. Family Dining is going to go price that sidewalk. If it's where we think it's going to be or higher, they may well not move forward with any aspect of this project. This is, as I said from the outset, we're talking about, you know, a 744-square-foot playground addition and the reconfiguration of drive-through from one lane to two lanes. This is not a big project in terms of what it's going to drive, and they're not adding seats, so they're not expecting a tremendous increase in customer traffic. This is really about refreshing the building, prettying up the landscaping and doing those kinds of things, which we understand everybody's in favor of. But there's a, there is an economic tipping point for that for any landowners or any property owners, so...
So the motion, the way it's...
Depending on where it goes, where that number comes in, we'll decide whether or not the project moves forward if the approval tonight is with sidewalks.
So I don't know if the motion has to be reworded because it doesn't have the alternatives, so just...
So I actually didn't make a motion there because of the wording, but I would make a motion that we approve the land development application for Family Dining, Burger King, for the expansion of the playground, and a second drive-through lane without the sidewalk waiver. And I submove.
So it's without the sidewalk waiver?
Correct.
Are you... Have you started? Any other questions, or...
No.
Okay, Commissioner, who else had a question? Commissioner Klein?
If I could just jump in here.
Oh, yes, sir.
Two things. One, Commissioner Sanchez, I think you probably also want to deny the curb waiver also.
That's part of, he's correct about that.
That's because that's part of the sidewalk. So if you're going to deny it, you'd want to deny 146-27A and 146-27F.
What he said.
Does you have a question, Commissioner Spiegelman?
You can have a question. Thank you. Just one more comment. I certainly, I know this area pretty well. I've never claimed to know it as well as Commissioner Gillespie, who represents it, or Commissioner Vehi, or Commissioner Sanchez, who grew up near there. But following the last meeting, Commissioner Sanchez did, and I did a little site visit and drove around and around and around many, many times and just kept looking at all the details, the grade issue, which is significant. And, you know, I couldn't help but notice, you know, you could see the obvious areas where foot traffic up those, up that slope has worn a path. Somebody's walking up there. There was no, you know, there's no wheel traffic, no one who's a wheelchair user is going on that stretch, no one who has a stroller is taking their kids on that stretch, but somebody's walking up there. Remind me a lot of Edgehill Road, 1,000 block of Edgehill Road near the water tower, before we got that project to put the sidewalks in there. And those sidewalks have made things a lot better. There was a, there was quite a grade there, and it looked actually a lot like this, sort of, you know, steep, you know, sloping and kind of ragged at the end. And now it's a lot better. So that's just something I noted when we did that site visit. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner, Vice President Klein.
Yes, I have a couple of questions and then I have a question for the solicitor, but I'll ask my first questions of Ms. Farrell. So what's triggering the land development? Is it the second driveline? Is it the addition?
We, your guess is as good as mine, quite frankly. I mean, I think that the argument that the township has made is that it's the addition of the second drive-through because we're reconfiguring internal traffic. I think there's an argument as to whether or not that's really land development. We didn't go down that road with them. The playground, the internal playground itself is, I believe, almost, is it all on impervious or almost entirely?
It's all on existing impervious.
It's all on existing impervious. So all, those are the only improvements. And I think that goes back to, you know, Commissioner Gillespie's point that she's reiterated a couple of times. I mean, this is not a full redevelopment of this project. We're reskinning the building to improve the appearance. We're reconfiguring some internal site traffic to make it a little easier and more comfortable to move through that site, particularly through the drive-through, and we're adding a play area that's internal to the building. There's no increase in, I think there's two seats. There's like two or three physical seats that get added in the playground area, so we're not talking about an increase in, you know, even really in customers. So that's, our understanding from the township's review is that the position that they took with respect to land development being triggered was because of the reconfiguration of the drive aisle.
So is that confirmation? Is that what triggered the land development application? Is the increased impervious for the second driveline?
It's my understanding that the land development application was filed because the ordinance required it, and it was the applicant who needed to put in the second driveway because of the requirements that Burger King was putting on for the playground area. I mean, we didn't, obviously, a land development application is required, period, for what they wanted to do. So I'm not quite understanding...
The drivelines, the playground?
No, that's my point. I'm not saying that...
The additional drivelines, it seems counterproductive because if there's a playground, I mean, I know you're, I understand, but that's Burger King's issue, but if...
Correct.
I don't understand how playgrounds trigger the second driveline because if they're coming to the playground, they're usually not using the driveline. So I don't, that I don't get. I guess my question is, is the second driveline the one that's triggering the land development?
I think that question needs to be answered by the applicant.
Okay. Well, I don't think anybody's answering it. So let's assume, let's assume for the sake of this conversation, what's that?
I can answer it, yes. That's what it was.
Correct. I mean, that's our understanding of why the...
A year ago, we came to the township with the building and the playgrounds, and it was not a land development at that time. By the time they submitted the plans, there's some changes in the township. We came back in to ask to familiarize the new personnels with it, and it became a land development. So it's because of the drive, double drive-through.
So if you got rid of the driveline...
We ended up double drive-through after the initial conversation.
So if you got rid of the second driveline, you wouldn't have a land development application?
Perhaps. I can, I can almost say with certainty that that's not something that Burger King is going to entertain. I mean, I think that that, what is really driving a lot of the need for the work that's going on is to be able to get people through there efficiently. This is Burger King's new model. So what Burger King is rolling out with all their franchisees is that as you are upgrading these exteriors and you're reskinning them, part of it is the reconfiguration of that drive aisle as well. It's part of their company-wide model.
And I guess my question, and going back to, thank you for your answer, but my question for the solicitor is, I mean, there's been all this talk about holding them hostage and adding stuff. Am I correct that if there is a land development application, they're held to the requirements of our subdivision of land development ordinance?
Correct.
And that subdivision of land development ordinance requires sidewalks and curbing?
Correct.
So if we waived it, we're actually giving them something that they don't ordinarily have the right to get?
Well, you're correct. Waivers are within the discretion of the governing body after a determination is made as to whether or not you believe it's in the best interest of the township to grant or deny them.
Well, we're certainly not holding them hostage or adding something above and beyond what is ordinarily required based on the subdivision of land development ordinance?
No, we're certainly not holding them hostage. This is not like we're making them, you know, do something halfway across the township or something along those lines. No, this is a standard process by which the board determines whether or not they believe it's in the best interest of the township to grant or deny a waiver.
Right. Okay. I mean, I, you know, I understand the minor work that you're doing here, but you're held under the subdivision of land development ordinance, which I gather you understand that if you are going for land development, this is a requirement. I guess my question is, you know, find out from Burger King if you don't have to put the second driveline in. Then your problems go away. You don't need to do a sidewalk, and you save money on the second driveline, and you get everything else that you're looking for.
That's not the plan that's been presented. So the plan that's been presented is with a double drive-through, so... And we understand that there are, that is the waiver process. I mean, there are waivers that come into play in land development all the time. We are making our argument. You may not agree with us, and that's fair.
I understand.
That's why you vote, and I make my argument. So our argument certainly is that we think that that's money well-spent elsewhere in favor of saving trees and doing some minor interior work. I can't say to you for sure whether the project goes forward or not, and I don't mean that as a threat. I'm not, I'm just giving, I'm giving you the lay of the land. If this is approved without the waiver and the sidewalks are required, Family Dining will take a look at it. They're going to get the numbers. They may move forward with the whole project. They may not. We don't know.
Understand.
So that's really where we are.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. One last comment, then we're going to make a motion, which is already on the floor, sir? Yes. Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. Now that you've said one last comment, I almost forgot what I was going to say. When this application first came to us, because I do use, I do use this Burger King frequently. I just love cheeseburgers with pickle. I have noticed that, and I thought that the second driveway, the merging driveways, was a really great idea because the drive-through at certain times of the day is so long that it's actually more of a danger because it wraps around the building, the single driveway. The double merging driveway would stack those cars differently, creating a much safer situation. I appreciate that, using the words "holding hostage," I hope that wasn't too strong, but maybe it was. The suggestion of a safety, a committee to look at this was just a suggestion. I think this can be accomplished, but I don't think we have to hold Burger King to it now. And answer this for me, isn't Burger King a franchise?
Yes.
So it is the franchisee that is paying for this, I would assume?
Right. Family Dining, we have a representative here, but Family Dining is the franchisee in this location. Correct.
So the improvements are the, not at the insistence of Burger King, but of the franchisee. Correct?
I don't know what you mean by the insistence of. There's a, there is a, there's a program nationally for Burger King. As their, as their franchisees are able, they're encouraging them to make these upgrades. So the upgrades are coming from, they're not coming out of whole cloth from the franchisee. They are following a standard package that Burger King is using throughout the country, much like you're seeing in other Burger Kings, other McDonald's.
Yes.
Wendy's, they're all sort of reskinning. This is the new approach. They're reskinning the buildings.
Burger King and Willow Grove has also made wonderful improvements and modernized their building.
Right. So they're contemporary, they're trying to sort of make the buildings look a little more contemporary. The, that's when those two, that dual-lane drive-through is going through, they're finding that's much more efficient. It's much safer internally. So all of that is happening at a national level. At the local level, it is this franchisee who's responsible for those costs.
I think, I think the double driveway, the merging driveway is actually a safety issue. I really do.
Okay, I think what I'd like to do is...
Commissioner Lucker, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to...
There's already a motion on the floor.
I need a second. I'm sorry, yeah. I'll make the motion.
There's already a motion and a second on the floor.
Correct.
To make an amendment.
It's a motion to amend the motion.
Well, I think Commissioner Sanchez's motion is to approve the land development, but not grant the waivers for curbs and sidewalks, 146-27A and 146-27F. And that was approved, that was seconded by, I believe, Commissioner Spiegelman. The way it has always been our practice here, at least in the five-plus years that I've been here, is that when we have a motion on the floor and a second, if somebody wants to make an amendment, then the person who makes the motion either accepts the amendment or doesn't. And if not, we vote on the original motion. If that fails, then your motion would be in order at that point. Your amended motion would be, or new motion would be in order at that point in time. But it is within your right to make a motion and then if there's a second, to amend it and then to take, us to take a vote on whether or not to grant the amendment. I know it's getting convoluted. It's practice, what we do as far as practice, as opposed to what the actual rules are, so...
Having said that... Mr. Sanchez, Commissioner Sanchez, could you repeat your motion so for clarity, so we all understand what the motion is on the floor?
I don't have the code sections. I didn't write them in either time, so if you want to chime in, Mr. Solicitor. My motion was to approve the land development application for Family Dining Incorporated, Burger King, for the building expansion for a playground and second drive-through lane without the waivers for curbing and sidewalks under the sections the solicitor will...
146-27A and 146-27B.
Right. And it was moved, and there was a second on that, correct?
Right, it's correct.
And you're saying that they have to put the sidewalks in with that amendment?
Commissioner Vehi, do you still want to...
I want to make a motion to permit a waiver of the sidewalk requirement.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I want a motion to amend the motion that's pending to waive the sidewalk requirement for the reasons I've already stated. Second, I second that curve as well.
So, Mr. Solicitor, was there a second on that?
Right here.
So if I'm not mistaken, we have to vote on the amended motion first?
No. The vote now is whether or not we are going to amend by a majority vote Commissioner Sanchez's original motion. So if you want Commissioner Sanchez's motion to proceed as is, you would vote no. If you want Commissioner Sanchez's motion to be amended, you would vote yes.
I believe we need to take public comment before any of this...
Well, what would we do?
Okay.
How about if we step out of the way?
Right. Okay. We're going to open the floor right now for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to come up to the podium, state their name and address for the record, and make a public comment on this agenda item before you? All right. There are none, so at this time, Mr. Solicitor, I don't want you to repeat... all that, so, because this is getting more complicated as we go along.
On the amendment.
Right. Right, on Commissioner Vejey's.
We're voting on the amendment.
We're voting on the amendment?
That's correct. You're voting on whether you accept Commissioner Vejey's amendment to the original motion.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Myers?
No.
I want to be sure.
If you vote yes, you are voting to amend Commissioner Sanchez's motion.
Which would mean to waive the-
To waive the sidewalks. If you vote no, you are voting to keep Commissioner Sanchez's original motion intact, which would be not to waive the sidewalks.
Thank you, sir.
My vote is yes. Commissioner Rothstein?
My vote is no.
Commissioner Rothstein?
No.
Commissioner DePulcito?
If you build a sidewalk, people will walk on it. My vote is no.
Commissioner Sanchez?
No.
Commissioner Thompson?
No.
Commissioner Schreiber?
No.
Commissioner Farwell?
No.
Commissioner Spiegelman?
No.
Commissioner Maye?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Zepan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowen?
No.
Commissioner Plon?
No.
Commissioner Lucker?
Yes.
Ten, opposed. Five, in favor.
So now we're back to the original-
Commissioner Sanchez's original motion.
Is on the floor and seconded.
We should take all the comments on-
On that, okay.
On that, because that is now a motion that is going to go-
Okay, is, again, I repeat, are there any public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Van Hellersley, 1047 Huntington Road. I, I applaud the democracy that's happening. I love it. And I would also agree with those who are in favor of the sidewalks. I love trees. I love Abington. I love having that we have the green space, but for the sake of public safety and for the sake of keeping within the ordinance in, in which we have in place, I would submit that, that I, I mean, and I have small, I have kids of many ages, and I would say that the sidewalks would be in the best interest of our residents.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments? If there are none, we're ready to vote on the motion on the floor made by Commissioner Sanchez. And may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Arden Myers? I'm assuming that since I voted yes before, I'm voting no.
This is now to approve the land development without the waivers.
Between being in favor, see, with land development, then they must put in-
Putting the sidewalks in.
Then my vote is no. Commissioner Rothstein?
My vote is yes.
Commissioner Rothstein?
Yes.
Commissioner DePulcito?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Yes.
Commissioner Farwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Spiegelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Maye?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothstein?
No.
Commissioner Zepan?
No.
Commissioner Bellman?
Yes.
Commissioner Plon?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucker?
Yes.
Take all in favor, there's two here.
Mr. President, that concludes the first item of business on the unfinished business agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. At this time, we move to new business, Public Works Committee, and I'd like to call on Commissioner Drew Rothman, Chair. Commissioner Drew Rothman, Chair, for new business.
Yes. Tonight, we have one item on the Public Works Committee agenda. Actually, this, Mr. Solicitor, I have a quick question. Can I read this and then ask for, for an explanation from Township Manager and not do it as a motion at first?
Sir?
Okay. So the first item will be to adopt Resolution Number 18-047 authorizing the execution of a 2017 Greenlight Go Program Grant reimbursement agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and authorizing and directing the Township Manager, Richard J. Manfredi, to sign on the township's behalf and execute all future documents related to this grant. Manager, hello, my good friend.
Where you going today?
I'm over here.
I know, I see.
Could you explain this for us, please?
Yes. We awarded a grant back in 2017 to upgrade two intersections, which were Jacob Town and Meeting House and Greenwood Avenue and Washington Lane. At that time, we, we did all the paperwork. We went to the board, it was accepted by the board. We did, we moved forward on that grant, and we accepted a grant at that point in time. We did the paperwork that was necessary at that time. Since then, Pendott has changed their requirements. Sometimes they don't even know what the requirements are. So what happened was, we had all, all the paperwork in, we received a phone call about three weeks ago, and says, you have to accept a grant. So we talked to them, we told them we had accepted a grant, and all the paperwork was in, and they said, no, the new procedure is you have to do it online. So we proceeded to do work online to get, to get the approvals. And that took, and I talked to a woman three weeks, three weeks ago, and she said, that's the new requirement, that's what has to happen. Well, turns out that is not exactly how it goes down. The bottom line is, we have to send paperwork in, a new agreement, but our resolution has to be site-specific to that particular, those two intersections. In the past, they allowed us to put down a generic, uh, resolution, and all it is basically, it just says that the Township Manager is authorized by the board to go ahead and sign for any agreements, grant agreements with, with Pendott. Now they make it site-specific, so if they give you a grant, you have to pass a new resolution saying you, that the Township Manager can sign that grant specifically. Okay, so each, so what we've done is, internally now, we're not even going to bother asking Pendott what the requirements are, we're just going to go full bore, do everything, and then if they don't need it, then it's fine, you know, rather than, get run into a situation like that. The problem is, we have to be accepted by the seventh. And there wasn't another board meeting coming, you know, before that, except for this one. Which is why it was the last minute to be put on the board. Otherwise, you would have had a lot more notice and better explanation for it.
Does anyone else have any questions before I make the motion? Well, we have to go to public comment, too, right, at some point?
Well, you have to make a motion first before the public comment.
Okay.
I did have one comment. So, Manager Manfredi, have we been notified by the county? I think they took a vote last week on approving the matches for the Greenlight Go Grants.
I have not received specific notification.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know that there was, all the recommendations were made, and we should be receiving from the County Transportation Grant Program, the match money that was requested for both the 2017 and 2018 Greenlight Go Awards. So obviously, support this.
This really is, as Mr. Miklo, our Special Projects Manager, just made us aware, a change in the procedures with Pendott. It's, it's really that simple. And he caught it, fortunately, so that we can get it done tonight.
Great. Commissioner Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Miklo. And this is, we, even though we're laser focusing it as Pendott's making us require, this is part of a great package you had put together for that entire stretch of Greenwood Avenue, not only to modernize both of these intersections, but we're going to solve that bonding problem on the road and get the crosswalk at the middle where the kids cross anyway from Abington Friends to the Plaza Complex, it's going to, and put a sidewalk down that other stretch. This is, you know, a revolution in walkability for that section, and since walkability seems to be the theme of the night, I just wanted to underscore that. This was, this was a great thing that we had, and we'll even connect with that other grant, I forget which one, the TAP program, that will provide other connections down past Avalthor Park, bike lanes, all the way to the Penna Pack Trail, so this is, this is awesome.
Absolutely. It's a culmination of, if you recall, way back when, we, there was a presentation done for the board concerning this entire project. This is almost a culmination. One little piece is still left, and we're working on it right now, but that will complete this entire, we will actually, it will encompass everything from Frere Hill all the way through Jacob Town, through Abington Township, and all the way out into McKinley. It will totally integrate that entire section, make it totally walkable, and actually, I think there's a possibly bicycable, too, so.
Thank you.
He's going to make a motion first.
Did Commissioner DePulcito have a question?
Yeah. No, I didn't have a question. I just had a comment, and if it's appropriate or not. Ed, I haven't seen you in eight months. You look fantastic.
I appreciate it. Feeling better every day.
Okay, Commissioner Rothman, did you-
Yeah, I agree. It's great to see you, and also, I'm really proud to, to make the motion. Do I have to read it again? Because it's kind of boring, but, all right. Hasn't been a short night, anyway. Motion to, I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 18-047 authorizing the execution of a 2017 Greenlight Go Program Grant reimbursement agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and authorizing and directing the Township Manager, Richard J. Manfredi, to sign on the township's behalf and execute all future documents related to this grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any comments from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
That's the end of the Public Works Committee agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Again, under new business, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Ben Sanchez again, the Director of the Administrative Code and Land Use Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have ACL 1, 110818. This is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2162, an ordinance of Abington Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, amending the Abington Township ordinance of 2017, amending the Abington Township zoning ordinance of 2017 as amended by amending Article 7 AO Apartment Office District, adding H12 senior apartment units as a use permitted by conditional use in AO Apartment Office District, by amending Article 21 Use Regulations, adding H12 senior apartments, senior apartment units as a use, and by amending Article 23 Parking and Transportation to include use H12 senior apartment units, an ISO move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. At this time, did you want to have the applicant make any comments?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Rob Gunlock, attorney for the applicant, BET Investments. Here with me from BET is Michael Markman, Pete Cleland, and Matt Johnson, also John Kennedy, their land planner who's been working on this project. Ms. Chairman, we're not here tonight for a hearing. We're only here to authorize an advertisement to allow us to come back and have a hearing. And that hearing would be as to three items. One, the ordinance amendment to allow this new senior housing use in the OA zoning district. Second, to rezone four parcels to the AO zoning district. That would be the YMCA parcel, the two adjacent funeral home parcels, and one residential parcel behind the YMCA. And third, to schedule the conditional use hearing, because this ordinance amendment only allows this proposed use by conditional use within the township. Again, tonight is just for the authorization to advertise. It's important that we don't have a hearing, that we don't present evidence until full notice is given to the public, notice to all the residents, advertisement in the newspaper, posting of the property, the township webpage, and then going back to the Township Planning Commission for their recommendations on these three proposed action items as well. And then have the hearing, posting all of our exhibits in advance on the township webpage to give all of the public, those who may be in favor, those who may be opposed, an opportunity to look at everything and present their case to this board here at a fully advertised hearing. So that's why we're here tonight. We're certainly able to address any questions. Substantively, we think it's best to delay those questions until the actual hearing. Certainly, if there are questions, we can vent those with the Planning Commission when we go there before the hearing, and we can bring those answers back with the appropriate consultants to this board as well the night of the hearing.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions of the applicant? Vice President Klein?
So, I'm, I'm sorry, you might have mentioned this, but I assume we also have to do a map amendment?
Yes, correct. We submitted it, I believe it's been combined and under the same ordinance, but there are technically two separate action items. One is the adoption of the text amendment to establish the new use and the regulations relating to it, and the second is the map amendment for the four parcels that have been identified as part of this project.
So if we're going to go ahead with the advertising, we need to amend the motion to include the map amendment portion of the, is that correct? Because I'm reading the motion that's in front of us, and it doesn't talk about amendment, then.
I believe, I believe you're right, Mr. Klein. It's not specifically on the agenda item, but I think it was part of the actual ordinance amendment combined together.
And I think I've learned how to read Lauren's lips. Do we have to have two separate motions for it?
There's two separate ordinances.
Correct. Right, so we have to, two, two separate motions, but they'll be scheduled on the same date, correct? So will somebody provide us with the language for the second motion if we're going to go ahead with the advertising, so that we can handle that at the same time?
Are, are you referring to the motion tonight to approve advertising for the text amendment and the map amendment?
I'm asking the question, do we need to, do we need to advertise the amendment, the map amendment ordinance at the same time we need to advertise the text amendments that are listed in Commissioner Sanchez's motion?
If the board approves it tonight, we will be advertising the text amendment, the map amendment, and the conditional use hearing all at the same time.
Right. This motion doesn't mention the map amendment. That's what, that's the housekeeping item I'm getting to.
Right. And so that housekeeping item, since it was presented as two different, two different ordinances, that they're not encompassed just in one, then Commissioner Sanchez's motion will be, will have to be amended for the text amendment, the map amendment, and for the conditional use hearing.
Okay, that's, we'll have to get to that right this second, but I just want to make sure I understood.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, can I, you mentioned one other housekeeping item-
Yes, sir.
-just to close the loop, in looking at the board's meeting minutes from January 11th, 2018, Commissioner Sanchez requested that there be a neighbor meeting scheduled before the Planning Commission, and then Planning Commission meetings. For the record, that did occur. There was a neighbor meeting on January 29th.
Right.
And then there were subsequent Planning Commission meetings on April 10th, June 26th, and August 28th. And then we would, if the board moved forward with the authorization to advertise, be on the next agenda of the Planning Commission, again, for all three of these items for a recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And just for clarity, board members, from something that Mr. Gunlock said, they will be going back to the Planning Commission on the conditional use hearing, and then on the conditional use application, and also on the text amendment and the map amendment. So they'll be going back to planning on all three of those at the same time if the board authorizes advertising.
Okay, thank you. Now, back to the solicitor, do we have to, I think Vice President Klein mentioned, do we have to have an amendment to the original motion made by Commissioner Sanchez?
Commissioner Sanchez just merely needs to amend his motion to include advertising of the map amendment. And then whoever seconded it needs-
And the conditional use.
And, and the conditional use.
So then we just have one vote then?
Right. So this, your motion should be, you read everything, but it should be to advertise the text amendment, the map amendment, and the conditional use hearing.
Well, before, before, I mean, there's only, there's only one other thing missing here is a date.
Yeah, well, I-
So, I mean, I think before we amend the motion, we should have a, we should discuss what the date's going to be, correct?
You, you, you don't need to advertise it to a specific date.
Oh, okay.
If you, you want to, you can. Obviously, the advertising takes care of the issue of making sure that there is notice for what date it is going to be. There are certain requirements under the MPC for- There are certain requirements under the MPC for the time of advertising, so you couldn't, you couldn't do this, you know, two days from now. But if you're going to, if the board knows what date it's going to do it on, if it approves it, that can be included in the motion. If the board wanted to do it at its December meeting, that could be included in the motion, but I'm not sure if a, a date has been found, a potential date has been found.
Mr. Clark, if President Luker, there are dates in December. The 11th, I believe, we circulated, the 18th, we circulated, and of course, we have the regular meeting on the 13th, but I will defer to Commissioner Luker and the Board of Commissioners to decide which date, if, if any of those they want to do it on.
Thank you.
But the ordinances do not have to be tied to that.
That's fine. In the past, we have. I just, I know it doesn't have, I know it doesn't have to. I just want to make sure we're clear as to how we're moving forward, so.
Okay.
The, the, the three dates that the manager just mentioned, the 11th will be tight. You have a 30-day advertising requirement, so we're at the 8th. So if you pick the 11th, that date would be, would be tight. The 13th or the 18th would probably be better. But we could make the 11th if that's what the board decided and decided to advertise this evening.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanchez, you want to amend that motion, the original motion?
Yes, I would amend the motion.
And you can designate the 18th as the date?
So, I amend the motion that I made earlier to advertise the ordinance, but to include the text amendment, the map amendment, and the conditional use hearing for a date cer, for a hearing on a date certain of December 18th, 2018. An ISO move. Should I bungle that?
Just to, no, it's fine. Just to avoid any confusion, why don't we say the, the time, too? If it's going to be 7:00 PM or?
Correct. 7:00 PM.
Second.
Can we use some more comment?
There's going to be, there's an opportunity for that, just momentarily. Is there a second to Commissioner Sanchez's?
I just re-seconded it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
As instructed.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments from Commissioners?
I have one comment.
Vice President Klein?
So, I, as, as the attorney said, I mean, I have a lot of questions about this project, about the ordinance, but I do believe that the project is worth having a, a hearing on. I, that's not an indication one way or the other as to my support or not support. So I do have a lot of questions, and I realize we don't want to litigate that situation at this point, but I do believe that this project is worth listening to at a hearing and, and digging into the details. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners? Commissioners Spiegelman, and then Commissioners Oppone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we're about to hear from the very extremely well-organized neighbors who, you know, who are, who are very strongly and vocally oppose this project. We're about to hear from all them. I don't know, we might hear from our, our visitors from BET, I don't know. But I'm going to say something that I have said consistently in all my time as Commissioner, with every advertisement of a public hearing, that the advertisement of a public hearing, no one should be under any impression that the advertisement of a public hearing is the same thing as an approval, a green light, an automatic thumbs up in any way to the matter before us. I know I've been hearing from, I've been hearing from a lot of folks in the ward I represent who are opposed to this project, and when they've contacted me and said, "I am opposed," I've been going out of my way to ask them exactly why, so I can get every, all of their thoughts down as part of my evaluation process. I've also heard from just as many people who are in favor of this project and the, and the associated zoning change. And again, when they've contacted me, I have gone, I'm going out of my way to not just hear, you know, not just, you know, accept, "Okay, well, give it the thumbs up." Why? Why are you in favor of this project? I know, I'm, I'm sure that the nearby neighbors aren't going to be so happy to hear that I've heard from a lot of people in favor of it, but here's something that I'm sure our BET guests aren't going to be so happy to hear. I've had a couple of people contact, actually, more than a couple, including one just two, three days ago, contact me, contacting me. We've had the interaction. They've explained to me very clearly why they're, this is, the folks I'm thinking of are, are folks who are against, and they asked, "How can I get one of those signs?" And I told them about the Facebook group, and I gave them Mr. McMahon's contact information so they could get a sign, which is to say, as I, I can only speak for myself, I will be voting in favor of advertising, but I am undecided on this project. I'm looking forward to a lot of additional data coming in, and, you know, I've been, like all of us, I think, evaluating this for a long time. So again, as I've said consistently with every motion to advertise, for every hot-button issue that I've ever faced in my time as Commissioner, a motion to advertise is a motion to move forward with the process and give this the final, the, the closing arguments, the final full culmination of our evaluation that it deserves. Thank you.
I forgot who I called on next. Thank you, Commissioner Spiegel. Was it Commissioners Oppone? Okay, thank you.
I just have one quick question regarding the construction of this facility. Is that appropriate to ask that now or wait?
I would probably wait, unless I'm mistaken. I think the.
You can ask whatever you want, but.
I mean, you can ask, but I think.
You can ask whatever you want.
But I think that, I think that.
We're going to read.
Right, this is a motion, right.
You can vote over the hearing.
This is a motion to advertise. I think you want to.
I just want to know, and I haven't seen anything on this yet, is this frame or masonry, the construction of this facility?
The construction hasn't been designed yet, but it will comply with township requirements.
With the ordinance that we have, masonry?
If the ordinance is masonry, it'll comply with masonry. It's just, it'll comply whatever ordinance exists when it's built. We haven't designed any architectural plans, so if this is successful, it may not be, but if it's successful, we then go to land development, and then we would have to do architectural plans, which we wouldn't even probably begin until sometime late next year if it were successful. So at that point, you know, we'll design it, whatever, whatever code applies, we will design it to that code.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. I think I understood is that at the actual hearing, when we get a full presentation, so then, because I think there have been different plans and different densities, and so when we get the full final plan, so that we know exactly what we're talking about?
Yes, absolutely. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You'll, you'll get a package of information after we go to the Planning Commission meeting, because we may supplement or update or provide some additional information in some of our studies and our plans, but there'll be a full package of information that you will all get in advance of the hearing, and certainly will be prepared with all of the consultants to address any questions, and the neighbors for or against will be here to give you their input as well. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
But just, just for clarity, Commissioner Myers, somewhat dovetailing with Commissioner Oppone's question, you, you may see a sketch of what the, like an artist's rendering of what the building will look like, but since this isn't the land development process, you're not going to get fully engineered plans, you're not going to get what you saw earlier with, with the Burger King. This is the, the text amendment, the map amendment, and the conditional use hearing. All of that would come later if approved during the land development process, but you will get, this will be a full-blown hearing on the date that's been selected if the board votes in favor.
Mr. Mooney, renderings.
Yes, yes.
Yes, we'll have site plans, we'll have renderings, we'll have a land planner report with all the data about the proposed amendments and conditional use requirements. There'll be a traffic study. We're going to give you a whole package of information, but as Mr. Clark says, we're not going to fully engineer the 100-sheet plan set unless and until it did move forward.
If there's any questions, I would be delighted.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioners Oppone, and then Commissioner.
Just a follow-up on that. So, by the time we vote, let's say we vote on this the end of December, so we're not going to see a set of plans that say whether this is frame or masonry. If that's true, how can, how can we vote on that?
We'll, we'll get you that information by the hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
The packet of information that you're talking about, that'll be made available to the public, I would assume, before the hearing as well?
Yes, absolutely. We're, we're going to coordinate with the township manager to get all those materials to the township and on the township webpage, so everybody can access all those materials. That's our, our goal is to get it online for everybody to access before the hearing.
Thank you.
And then there'll be extra hard copies that we'll bring here for all of you, and some extra copies here for Mr. Manfredi to, to give out to anybody who wants to see the paper copies as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Vice President Klein?
I just have one, I have one request by either the solicitor or the applicant's attorney. Some of this process is a little confusing to, to the public and to some of the Commissioners sometimes, so can we get a full explanation? I know, I think everybody understands the zoning amendment aspect. I would like to have somebody explain the conditional use aspect to this, because I think that is always a nebulous and sometimes misunderstood process, and why that's being advertised at the same time, and what its purpose is. So I don't know. You guys can, you guys can have a thumb war and figure out who does it, but.
I'll take first crack.
Public purpose, I think it's worth having an explanation of the conditional use process.
Can certainly correct me. Uses under a zoning ordinance can either be by right uses, conditional uses, or special exception. If it's a special exception use, it goes to the zoning hearing board. If it's a by right use, an applicant comes straight in here with a set of land development plans, and if it's a conditional use, they start with a conditional use hearing. Normally, the applicants don't fully engineer the plans at that point, because they need this board's approval of the use. As part of that hearing, the applicant has the burden to show compliance with all the specific requirements in the zoning ordinance, and then the general requirements in the zoning ordinance. And so the applicant has to bring forth their documentation in the form of reports, one of which will be a land planning report that Mr. Kennedy will prepare, where he will run through each of those requirements and explain why this project is in compliance with them, and attach the appropriate documentation. We then have the full hearing where we call the witnesses to show compliance with all of those requirements. That's our burden. This board can ask questions, and then any neighbors who would be opposed of the project could come forth and put their own testimony on to show that we don't comply with those requirements, and then ultimately, this board takes a vote as to whether or not the applicant has complied with those requirements. In addition, as a conditional use, as the name implies, this board has a right to impose conditions, reasonable conditions to ensure that the project is completed and operated in accordance with the testimony presented by the applicant and the requirements of the ordinance. So if you felt that an appropriate condition is required, like an easy one is when an applicant shows your renderings, that the project be constructed in accordance with the renderings that you've seen. If the applicant has offered to complete certain roadway improvements, a condition of approval is that the following roadway improvements be completed. So during the hearing, obviously, you're all encouraged to take notes of things that you hear, and things in the project that are important to you, you can share them with your solicitor. If they're appropriate conditions, because there's appropriate conditions and inappropriate conditions, the ones I named are all fair game to attach to your decision, then you ensure that the project, if approved, has to comply with all those conditions. And conditions as part of a conditional use approval is always a big item. It's not just the approval, it's what the applicant has to do in connection with and to be allowed to proceed forward. So that, that, that's how the hearing works. We're going to be as efficient as possible by giving you our evidence in advance and in writing, and bringing our witnesses here to present testimony in accordance with what we've given you, and then any of you can cross-examine them, ask them questions, and the public, anybody who wants to be a party, has a right to enter their appearance as a party and cross-examine our witnesses as well. We'll have them all here at that night, and then the, anybody who's opposed to it can step forward and put their evidence on the record, can either close the record that night, you can continue for another night if you need it, and then you can review the materials and make a decision. Ultimately, you render your decision subject to conditions. The solicitor writes it up, and we're subject to those conditions, then we would proceed forward to the land development process.
Thank you. Appreciate that explanation. I think that was helpful.
Thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners? If there are none, I'm going to open it for comments from the residents, and before we do, I'd like to remind you that there's a three-minute speaking limit, and if you would be so kind enough to, if you would, if someone ahead of you speaks and says something, if you would kindly not be redundant and continue on same, or same line of comments or criticism, whatever the case may be, so that it gives others an opportunity to have an opportunity to speak. So who would like to step up first? Name and address for the record, and.
My name is Herb McMahon. I'm from 1046 Huntington Road, and I would like to say, I think we're putting the, the cart before the horse. And the reason why I say that was that when we met in January, there was a certain process that was to be followed. The recommendation was to go to the Planning Commission for one visit, and we actually did two. I've never seen a written report or recommendations from that committee. I've seen some paraphrasing of individual comments from people, but I've never seen a recommendation either up or down, and the best I ever saw from those meetings was a 50-50 vote that the Commissioners were just split on whether they were in favor of this or against it. So I think, and then when we got the Planning Commission report back, I thought it was going to go to code and then be aired out, and then proceed from there.
So your question then is?
So my question is, is do I, you know, if I look back at the videotape from January, I see that we're supposed to go to the Planning Commission, and then there was going to be recommendations made based on those two meetings. There was at least, I would say, five or six hours worth of meeting.
Right.
And there has not been any written report or recommendation, and there was one vote, which I believe was 50-50.
Right.
So, and I, and I thought at that point, then it goes to code where it could be aired out, and there would be time for a public comment, and a little bit of, even from the developer's standpoint, some kind of reaction.
All right, for clarity then, Manager Manfredi or Solicitor Clark, do you want to basically map out the process that we're proceeding on right now with this application?
Sure. I think when we were here in January, and the motion was made to send the applicant to the Planning Commission, and to have a community meeting, the intent of that motion was to begin the process by which the plan would be reviewed by the Planning Commission and would eventually come back to the Board of Commissioners to make a determination as to whether or not they wanted to hear this matter. As we've discussed previously, unlike a regular land development application, for instance, the one we had earlier this evening, that is controlled by the time limits in the municipality's planning code, this, a text amendment, since it's within the discretion of the governing body, does not have those same time limits. This application went in front of the Planning Commission, I believe, on multiple occasions, and then in August, the applicant asked the Planning Commission for a final determination, and the Planning Commission, it was a, it was a confusing vote, but it is recorded as a 4-4 vote. As the board is aware, and perhaps members of the public are aware also, the Planning Commission is an advisory board, and their decision either to approve or to recommend, approval, recommend, denial, or to make no recommendation because of a 4-4 vote, is not binding on the Board of Commissioners. They are merely in an advisory board. So with their, that decision happening in, in, in August, with certain revisions being made to the amendment, the ordinance amendment over the last several months, the applicant is now before you, again, asking to be listed for a hearing, and if the board approves it, that will begin the next step in our, in the process, which will be that the applicant will go back to the Planning Commission for, again, another review of the text amendment, the map amendment, and for the conditional use hearing, and then we'll be here on the, the 18th, where that will be the full and complete hearing. To answer the speaker's question, or one of the, the issues, even if this had gone to the code committee, that would not have been the hearing. That would have just been very similar. That would have just been very similar to what we're doing this evening, which would have only been a decision whether or not to pass this to an advertised hearing. It would not have been, it would not have been the full-blown hearing. That will be what the applicant will present on the 18th.
That's, that's inconsistent with what I heard in January. I, I heard that we were going to have a certain process, that there would be recommendations made from the Planning Commission, and that based on those recommendations, then you would all vote on whether to advertise to go forward. And I believe that it's, it's completely inconsistent from what we heard in January.
Respectfully, I think it's completely consistent with what was discussed in January. The Planning Commission has reviewed the original text amendment and the original map amendment. Their recommendation is a 4-4 split, so again, it will go back to them, it will go back to them again, but they did, on the August meeting, they did vote on, on whether to recommend the approval or denial, and they were, they were split. So, I, I think when you look back at the motion in January, it is consistent with what, what was discussed.
All right. So, what I saw at that meeting, there was originally a vote that was 5-3, and then when it was announced that it was 5-3, it seemed like they were suddenly not sure what they were voting on, and it, you know, the beautiful thing about all this is it's on videotape. So, there was a 5-3 vote, and then they made the suggestion to re-vote again, and that's when the best they can come up with was a 50-50. And I've never seen a written report from that commission or that committee. So, I think that based on that, I think we're putting the horse before the cart. I, I think that we should basically have that information before you all make a decision whether you want to proceed.
McMahon, can I jump in first, just one second?
One second. Mr. Manfredi, comment on that.
Well, the Planning, Planning Commission meeting minutes from the August meeting are available and have been approved by the Planning Commission in their September meeting, I assume?
I believe they have.
Or something since then, and is available for public and is on our website.
I believe it's on the website.
So, I think, I mean...
What I saw from that was, it was just a paraphrasing of each speaker's comments. It would say Herb McMahon, you know, Huntington Road, and what I, basically, a summary of what I said. There wasn't anything from any of the members of that committee that would give you some kind of direction on how to proceed or recommendations or any of that.
But I think that's consistent with the process, as the solicitor talked about. It was still in an informal stage because the board had asked the applicant at their request to go to the Planning Commission and discuss the project, also go to the neighbors, but also go to the Planning Commission, and it was an informal process with, if the, if the board votes to advertise, and somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I'm saying the same thing, but if the board does vote to advertise, it'll go back to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission will then make a more formal recommendation to this board to consider at our, at the hearing if we vote to have a hearing. So, it, there's, their process, what you're asking will occur. It just has to occur within the formal process. The process before this time was not formal.
Yeah, I, my understanding, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's all right.
My understanding was that it was going to happen before the vote to advertise and go forward, and I thought that based on the, the five hours' worth of meeting, I thought that there would be something substantive that came of it, recommendations, a summary of what the, the members thought.
And there will be.
But there isn't.
Well...
And that was supposed to precede any kind of vote.
Right.
That was my, and people can go back and see the videotape in January and follow it for the, for themselves, and so I guess we could just agree to disagree. So, anyway, an answer to Mr. Spiegelman's question, why am I opposed to the, the text amendment? I think what we have is we have an applicant, Mr. Markman, who is extremely friendly with all the commissioners. He's well-known in the community, and I think that that is one reason why he has favor with the committee in the sense that he has overreached more than any other developer, and I think he's comfortable with that overreach, and I think that you all are comfortable with his overreach. So, I think that my concern is it sets a dangerous precedent where if we get another developer who is, is not as favorable as Mr. Markman, somebody that maybe you all don't have a relationship with, or, you know, you might even have a negative thought about the person, they will come in, and the precedent has been set by Mr. Markman and by you all, and suddenly there's a precedent saying, you know, you can rewrite your own text and, because it's been done before, and I think what that does is it sets it up for any developer who wants to come in here and rewrite anything. And, you know, I think Mr. Markman has basically set it up so that he knows that there's a certain amount of favor and a certain amount of trust with you all, and I think that's not going to happen with the next developer that comes before you. You may not like them as a person, or you may not like their project, but the precedent has been set. Now, one final point, because I know you all want to move on, and I've been up here. I wanted to ask, just out of kindness and respect to the citizens, if we could not have the meeting preceding Christmas. If you had it, you know, you're talking about Hanukkah and then Christmas, and really, if you waited till January, it's just a few weeks' difference, and I think that would be a huge sign of kindness and respect to everybody. So, I would ask your, your thoughts on that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to comment?
Once again, thank you for the democracy and the freedom of speech. I'm going to say that although it may not be in my best interest for us to have this hearing, because I live behind the property, I do think that it's in the best interest of all of the residents of Abington to hear this. It's not, I can't say that, you know, don't do this because it's really not in my best interest, but I do say that I think it is proper to have a formal hearing, and if we could please have it after Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane, and yes, I ask you to vote no to the hearing for one reason. The, the comments that Mr. McMahon just made to you are absolutely the case, is that that you were, it was defined in January what the process was, that they would go before the Planning Commission, and if it was determined to be a good project, then you would use that to decide whether you might want to move forward. Also, commented at the same time was the fact that, and particularly by one commissioner, but it should echo for all of you, that the residents and the, and the opinions on the ground should be the most important feature of this. So, you know, in, in that vein, I know we have, like, one commissioner who told me the other day that her residents are all in favor of it, so I stood outside her poll for close to an hour and handed out what it actually was. First of all, nobody knew about it. Literally, nobody knew about it. Not one person that, that I talked to, they said, "Oh, I heard about that." "You mean the new IMCA?" "Yeah, yeah, the new one." But nobody knew what was happening at the old one. That's number one, and I wonder how many of you have told your residents exactly what's happening. Number two, when they saw the pictures, which included the first presentation and the, the second presentation, we didn't have the third on there yet, but looks the same as the second, they just went, "No, whoa." And literally, this is a concern that we have, that your residents don't know this because you haven't told them what the details are, and you haven't talked to them about the fact that if this developer writes his own ticket, just the way he wants it, that every developer is going to do that. And so, it, it should not be advertised because the process that you set up to determine was to listen to your residents and to have advice from the Planning Commission, and you owe the residents that to hear that first. Also, again, no, no way this should happen at the holidays. December 18th is even worse than the 13th, which was the first date we heard. People's, out-of-town guests are there, people are preparing to leave for vacation, it's, you know, to see their family in another state. That's really, that's unconscionable, and I hope that you will consider moving that. Again, keeping developers within their zoning rights, you have an obligation to protect the, the residents, and their zoning rights are part of what is, adds to their well-being and to their, the, the value of their home and the quality of their lives. And it, it is not okay to allow one developer to come in and set that precedent. And the tools that residents need in order to protect them, such as explaining this conditional hearing and explaining other things, when we try to get those tools, they are not often afforded to us, or to find out where we can learn this. And as you know, I'm sure, that, you know, deadlines, like, you know, where the deadline for this is, it's somewhere on page 27 of the, you know, Montgomery County Planning, Planning Municipalities Planning Code, and something else is on another page, and something else is in the zoning code. And so, it is important that when you bring developers in that want to do something unusual like this, that at the very least, you ask them to provide any answers to any questions that the, that the residents ask, and that should also include having a page on the township website. So, all of those things have left the residents at a complete disadvantage. The page on the website could have all the links and the history, and it was promised by Mr. Markman, but then never put forth. He said he would do it a little later, couldn't do it right now, but he'd do it a little later. So, we do need to have that kind of consideration before you move to a hearing, because at every stage, they have seen, I want to just say, August, at the Planning Commission, August 28th, there were over 600 voices against. We had an association with 500 people, we had residents that spoke, I think, close to 20, and we had over, 600 voices were represented there, and four voices spoke in favor of it. That is reflective of everything that I see in the community and what I saw outside that commissioner's poll and several other commissioners' polls that I went to. That's, that's extremely important in deciding whether you're ready to move forward to a hearing, to know that your, your actual residents are asking you not to move to a hearing with this, where in a hearing, it can be over like that. Okay?
Thank you very much.
So, thank you, I, I appreciate that. I, I also want to say the frame and masonry thing is a very important question, and I honestly can't believe that they have priced out and know what their profits are and how many units they can afford to do and so on without knowing whether they're doing frame or masonry. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Any other comments from the public? Anyone else wish to speak? All right, hearing that, and commissioners? Sanchez, I'll turn it back to you.
There's a, there's a motion, the motion's on the floor.
Motion is on the floor, right. It's been moved to second it, okay? Could we have a roll call, please?
Let's clarify, we're voting to advertise, that's what we're voting on?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Robyn?
Yes.
Mr. Vipulcito?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Yes, to advertise only.
Mr. Fryber?
When you say advertise only, though, are we, are we advertising it to...
For the hearing.
...December 18th?
Correct, for the hearing, for December 18th at 7:00 PM on the map amendment, the text amendment, and the conditional use hearing.
I'm okay with that.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Mr. Steenland?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Blosky?
I would really rather have it another date. Is there any way we can change that?
But after the holidays.
Yeah, I think it's, I think to really make it...
We have 12 yeses as of right now.
Wow.
The motion on the floor is for approve the hearing date.
Including the date?
Including the date.
I, I am for the hearing, but I don't want the date, so I guess I have to say no just because of the date. I can't, you know...
Commissioner Segal?
I would have to say no because of the date as well. I, I just don't think that, I don't think that's right. I mean, it's the holidays, Hanukkah, Christmas, and you're going to have all this going on during like a holy season and all? Nah, have it after the holidays, then I'll vote for it. No.
Mr. Robyn?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
I'm going to say no, I'd like to have the hearing, but I would like, I would like to have it after the year, but...
Could we ask if everyone's in favor?
Do we have to date, and we have put a new motion forward or anything?
Because we don't know when the website... Did everybody understand they were voting about the...
Yes, they did.
Well, I think there's some question now.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I sacrificed my interest, my personal interest, for the interest of the township, and I asked that it be done after the holidays, and so I, I felt like I was being very generous to BET, to say, even though it's not in my interest for us to have this hearing, that we can have this interest for the interest of the entire township to hear about it, but then to have the date be on a date that is hardship for all of us, I find that to have been like a stab in the back. Respectfully submitted.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just submit to you that there are many months that are difficult. People go away in January, people are down the shore in the summer. I will tell you, first of all, that anyone can submit anything in writing in advance, and that doesn't mean that you have to end the hearing on the 18th. If you need more information and more time, you can make that determination. It, it starts the process. We're going to present the material. We will put it all online for the residents, we will make it available, and we'll continue to, to work to convey information and, and start the process on the 18th.
By what date will you have the information?
We, we will let Mr. Manfredi know tomorrow a schedule when the information will be available, and we'll provide it online, and we'll provide hard copies as well to him.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Aren't the commissioner meetings usually on the Thursday?
It's a special meeting.
Special meeting.
It's a dedicated night just to the hearing.
Right. Okay? Yes, Commissioner Myers.
May I just ask a process question on the solicitor?
Uh, yes, that...
Just a process question.
Go ahead.
For this hearing, at the end of it, are we the board required to vote at the end of that hearing?
Again, this is not under the same time limits as the normal land development application. Again, I'll relate it back to what we saw earlier with Burger King when someone said, "Can we continue this?", and Ms. Farrell wanted it, the decision rendered this evening, and under the time limit, she was allowed, she was, we had to make a decision this evening. Since this is a discretionary act, if on the night of the 18th, the board determines they need more information, they want to hear from additional witnesses, the same time limits do not apply. So, the applicant cannot say to you on the 18th, "You must take a vote tonight." If we need to push it out, if we want more information, we can, because the same time limits don't apply because it's a text amendment and not a normal land development application.
Can we confirm that the planning meeting next Thursday?
I, I don't know when the next...
I think, I mean, the planning meeting next Thursday.
The 15th is the planning, yeah. Now, a week from tonight is Planning Commission.
Okay, Commissioner Shriver.
So, if the Planning Commission goes into a second night, will we get, will that happen? Can that happen? And if it is, we won't get their information before the December 18th?
Well, the next Planning Commission meeting is November 15th. That doesn't necessarily mean that this will be on the November 15th. Planning Commission may do it at another date, have a special meeting. It may very well be the 15th, but it may, is not necessarily going to be the 15th.
But we're going to get the information from the Planning Committee, Commission before...
Prior, I would imagine that you would want, you would want the information from the Planning Commission prior to December 18th.
So, we have to get, go in front of the Planning Commission, get a recommendation from the Planning Commission prior to your...
from the Planning Commission prior to your meeting, number one. Number two, the Montgomery County Planning Commission as well has to provide a letter based on this. And let me just, I mean, the one thing I just want to say is, we've had a lot of meetings, we've probably had 10 hours of meetings, and as a result of those meetings, our, we have made 50, over 50 changes to the plan that we originally presented, and the ordinance has been dramatically modified. So basically, there's been responses to, the majority of the comments have been made. So the process was fruitful, in the sense that there was tremendous changes, that will all be talked about in the hearing, and will be talked about the Planning Commission meeting next month. So we will not come to you prior to the Planning Commission meeting and...
Both of those, the ours and Montgomery County.
Correct.
So if those are not both scheduled by December 18th?
Well, the Montgomery County Planning Commission has 30 days, and we've already submitted the ordinance to the Montgomery County Planning Commission.
Okay, so that one will happen?
Yes.
And will the Abington one happen? And can it, that maybe go into two nights? I mean, is there a chance we're not going to get this information before December 18th? I guess I'm asking.
If the Board of Commissioners requires that you have that information for the 18th, I will communicate that to the Planning Commission, and to Mr. Pennical and Ms. Montgomery, to have it scheduled in sufficient time, so that if they need more than one meeting, you have it by December 18th.
Yes.
If that is the wish of the Commission.
So, I mean, the 15th is a week from today, so that's the next Planning Commission meeting. Are we to understa, I mean, I think it's right for the people that are here, are we to understand that it will or will not be on that date? Because this is a good time to let everybody know.
I can tell you that, I can tell, what's that?
I'm trying to talk to Mr....
I can tell you that Mr. Pennical was out of the office today. He has asked me to see if we could not do it on the 15th, but we haven't had a chance to talk, so I can't say definitively yes or no. Won't I speak to Mr. Pennical and Ms. Montgomery and take a look at the Planning Commission's schedule and what they have? I'll be able to tell you, I'll have a better idea tomorrow.
Right, well, given the dates...
I guess what I'm asking is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Given the dates and time, given the date and the fact that the Planning Commission meeting meets in a week, I would prefer that it doesn't hit the Planning Commission on the 15th, since we don't, we can't make a definitive date right, since we can't make a definitive determination right now.
The applicant is prepared to go to the Planning Commission next Thursday. I, on the 15th, I, I'm not sure what impediment there would be to the Planning Commission hearing this next week.
Okay, so...
I don't, I don't think we have a tremendous amount of applications in front of us right now.
That's all fine and good, as long as we can make that date, as long as we can make that date certain today, because once we get past, and everybody leaves here tonight, we're not going to, you know, it's, it's a struggle to make sure that we, especially the people who are in the audience today, to know when that meeting's going to be.
The applicant will commit to being there on the 15th, and the Planning Commission needs some more time, Mr. Klein, and wants to schedule another special meeting, which they're allowed to do. We can schedule another special meeting with the neighbors there and let them know that date and work with them, but... So I just looked it up, there's actually one item on the agenda on the 15th for the Planning Commission. There's only one item on the agenda as it stands, so I imagine they can hear it on the 15th.
That's fine, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it being on the 15th, as long as we can believe it tonight, that it's on the 15th.
Let me be clear. Let me be clear.
Actually, I'm sorry, there's two items. There's Medoplex, and then there's the Harise Yaren and Jennifer Park owners of the property located at Morden, so there's, there's two items. So it'd be a third item on the agenda for November 15th, we're prepared to go on the 15th, so...
The question is, what does the Board of Commissioners want? If the Board of Commissioners wants it placed on the November 15th as a first meeting, so that there could be additional meetings, so that you have everything back here for December 18th, that is what we will do. If you want to see what the Planning Commission's schedule is going to be, if they're in a position to hear it as soon as the 15th, schedule a special meeting, it is really, you can either decide yourselves, you could leave it to the administration to work on a date that works, so that you have everything you need by December 18th, whatever you choose, just tell me what you'd like.
Commissioner's opponent has a question, or comment.
I'm sorry, before they leave. Just a quick follow-up to the question I asked, is this project 100% designed?
No.
Oh, it's not, okay. Okay, that's it.
So, if I may, Mr. President.
Sir.
Mr. Gunlock, did I hear you to say that if you went to the Planning Commission on the 15th, and that the Planning Commission at that time felt that they weren't prepared to, to hear it well enough, that if they set a date, to a future date, that met the Board of Commissioners' requirement to be back in time for the December 18th meetings, you would comply with that?
Yes, and I think that is what Mr. Klein is suggesting, and I think it's a good idea, because the residents are here, will be the third item on the 15th, and if the Planning Commission needs more time, we can select then a subsequent date before the 18th, where it can be a full night of comment, and let, again, all the residents know that date as well.
Yep, unless the Board of Commissioners has an objection to proceeding in that manner, then that's what we can do. Hearing no objections, that's what we will do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is everyone clear? All right. I've been requested, could we take a 10-minute intermission?
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Nathan, five-minute intermission, please.
I like all kinds of roasted vegetables.
Okay, let the records reflect, we're resuming our November 8th Board of Commissioners meeting at this time. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Lori Schreiber, Chairman of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. Public Safety has four items this evening. PS1 is a motion to, actually, this is going to be changed slightly from what you have on the agenda. It's a motion to review and approve purchasing agreement and body fleet camera systems and funding for 2019 appropriations and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Thompson.
This is coming from money that's been designated in the 2019 budget, correct?
Is approved, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments from Commissioners? From staff, any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, the motion passes.
PS2 is a motion to advertise ordinance 2163 and ordinance amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulation, Section 14, Stop Intersections, to add the following stop signs at Zane Avenue and Shell Meyer Street, Rosemore Avenue at Roberts Avenue, Osborne Avenue at Rossiter Avenue, Roberts Avenue at Ardsley Avenue, and Article 2, Parking Regulation, Section 25, Parking prohibited at all times, no parking between signs, no parking here at a corner, to add the following at Woodrow Avenue and Garden Road, and to repeal the following at Hildale Avenue and ISO move.
Second.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the main motion. I'd like to make the, to amend the...
Hold on.
I thought it was seconded.
No, someone was getting ready to second it.
Yeah, it was seconded.
It was seconded?
It was seconded.
Go ahead.
Sure. I'd like to present a motion to amend the main motion that we amend section, I believe it to be 1564A, which deals with the experimental, the experimental, the time-limited regulations with respect to the stop signs, and to read that it is extended to a period of 180 days or up to 180 days, as opposed to the current 90 days. Second.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion to amend, the original motion on the floor, made by Commissioner Prost, it's seconded. Are you ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor?
Wait, 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 do we have to vote on the amendment?
Any public comment on that first? Okay, there is none, now we can proceed.
Well, we need to vote on the amendment.
The amended motion, right.
And that can simply be a voice vote, I think it'll pass, and then I believe Commissioner Myers has a comment.
No, I have, I just, I have a question on the amendment, just, all this is, is extending the experimental time period, so in order to evaluate it, have a longer time to evaluate it?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Right.
So, the positive part of this is it takes us through maybe another season to be able to look at the, the stop sign and, or whatever the, it is. Okay, I just want to be sure, I always like to know what I'm voting for, so...
So we're just voting on the amendment?
Amendment, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And now we're going to vote on the amended motion.
Right. All, all those in favor of the amended motion, the original motion, which has been amended?
Do we need to get a public comment?
Again, public comment first. If there is none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Continue.
Okay. PS3 is a motion to adopt Resolution 18045, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Abington, adopting the 2017 Montgomery County 2017 Hazard Mitigation Plan and ISO move.
Moving and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners, staff, or residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
PS4 is a motion to accept the 2018 Firemen's Association of the State of Pennsylvania Recruitment and Retention Local Grant Award Grant and ISO move.
Moving and seconded. Comments from Commissioners, staff, residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. At this time, Commissioner John Spiegelman, Chair of Public Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, Public Affairs' agenda consists of four items, and the first is PA01. This is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 18-046, Resolution of the Township of Abington, Pennsylvania, closing out Community Conservation Partnership Grant Project, BRC-TAG-21-127, an ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Item PA2 is a motion to approve the public advertisement to solicit competitive bid, competitive construction bids for the street reconstruction work at the 2200 block of Parkview Avenue, and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments from Commissioners? From staff? Comments from residents? If there are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Item PA4 is a motion to reject all bids received for the Abington Library's door replacement project, and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments from Commissioners?
Just for clarification, why are we rejecting the bids?
The budgeted number was $37,000, and the bids came in at $104,075, respectfully.
Okay.
Because of the, obviously, the monies aren't there for it, we're going to go back, see what we could do, work with Director Hank McKee-Marshall.
Okay, so is the intent to rebid, or just to put it on hold for a while?
I think the intent is to rebid, but we may have to put it on hold, depending upon what these numbers look like.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from residents? If there are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Item PA5 is a motion to approve an addendum to the July 2014 executed agreement with Vision Technology Services for the hosting and maintenance of the township's website until December 22nd, 2023, and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Comments from staff? Comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Mr. President, that concludes the Public Affairs' agenda for tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. Vice President Stephen Klein, Commissioner of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. The Treasurer, the Treasurer Jay Blumenthal is not at the meeting tonight, his Treasurer's report is on file with the manager's office, if the public would like to review it, and can get copies of it. We have three items on our agenda, FC01-101618, motion to approve the September expenditures in the amount of $3,619,411.97, and salaries and wages in the amount of $1,879,527.83, and authorizing the proper officials to sign vouchers and payments of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of December 2018, and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Myers? Blosky?
Yes.
Blosky?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Carstow?
Yes.
Steenfield?
Yes.
Segal?
Yes.
Yes.
FC05-101618, motion to extend the current agreement with Boston Mutual for fiscal year 2019 through 2020, with no increase in premiums, and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Comments from staff or audience? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the motion passes.
FC06-110818, motion to approve $17,500 from the Contingency Fund, 01010025299, to rebuild a structure at the Public Safety Training Center for the animal control officer's use, and ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any comments from staff or residents? If there are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
That concludes the Finance Committee's agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Vice President Stephen Klein. At this time, we'll entertain public comment. Any comments from the public?
Finance, are you at the end of the meeting?
We're at the end of the meeting. Your name and address, sir.
Michael Curtis, Sr., 1137 Tyson Avenue. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
President Luker and Commissioners, and everybody in Abington here. Long story short, I brought you a sample of bamboo that's growing. Commissioner Spiegelman, who is my Commissioner, would you be so kind to help me straighten this thing out, let him see? I have been in touch with my Commissioner for over four months. I hate bamboo with a passion. Shady Tree Commission of Abington Township has been out to my neighbor's property twice to put some kind of a supposedly barrier in the ground to stop it from growing into my yard. I have been cutting it all summer long. I've got grandkids, and a lot of them, that come to play into the yard. We use the yard as a family gathering, and there's a lot of my family. I want to show you something, if I may. Pull back. Oh, this is one of the stalks that's grown up into my yard. According to the ordinance of Abington Township, if, correct me if I'm wrong, because I didn't bring it with me, whoever grows it in their property, which they have a right to do, that was passed here, is to maintain that bamboo and keep it in their yard, have a barrier in the ground to prevent it from growing into somebody else's property. That stalk is 3/4 inch around. Imagine, if you will, the size of a dime, or a size of a nickel. Somebody walking, falling down and hitting the jugular vein? An artery in your body? Depends on which one, it would be cut open, you have anywhere from a minute and a half to two and a half minutes of survival, if it's not stopped somehow. That's not going to occur in my property, that's not going to occur to anybody in my family. I want that stuff stopped. I want it stopped from growing into my property. I don't care how much my neighbor wants it, they can have all they want. All I'm asking is that the barriers get put into place, so I don't have to continue to trim this stuff down and cut it out of my yard constantly. I know the ordinance was passed, and that's why I'm saying I'm going with that. From my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, the 10-foot barrier into the ground is supposed to be there to prevent it from growing. The little barriers they got there, as you can see, it's not working. And last but not least, November 11th is coming up. Last year, I stood before you, and I was a bit emotional, because I had lost one of my closest cousins, who had served in Iraqi Freedom. He succumbed to his wounds. I want everybody to remember what November 4th is.[1732.33] I want everybody to remember what November fourth is. And if you don't, take a look in the cemetery. You'll see the price of freedom. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Thank you. Next, name and address, please.
My name is Sharon Kind. I'm at thirteen thirty Old Ford Road, Huntington Valley, Pennsylvania. Thank you all for this opportunity to speak in support of our shared commitment to an encroaching health disaster with regard to our current water quality, the effects of PFOS on human health in all of our areas. Also, I want to thank you for all the days and the weeks and the months and the years that you guys put in. I know you work hard. And I showed up at last month's meeting, when you had the shortest meeting ever, and this seems like one of the longest meetings, so I'm glad you're still here, so I could speak. With many people working together on this issue, the result of this contamination is completely inadequate. Some people understand the situation. Some people have taken precautions. Others haven't. Others can't afford it. Some folks know about it, and I bet you half the people in this room tonight have no idea about it. All of our lives are dramatically impacted by the water we are drinking and the water our children are drinking, in the hospitals, in the libraries, in the schools, in the restaurants, and in all of our homes. What is in our water? What is in our water? Thyroid and kidney cancer, immune system problems, tumors, carcinomas, leukemia, decreased birth rate, liver damage, increased cholesterol, cholesterol, increased asthma, ferti- ferti- sorry, fertility issues. Most alarming is this toxic chemical lives in the human body for eight to twelve years after one drink of water. This can, this crosses the placenta and has been detected in breast milk and is assimilated with neurodevelopment problems in infants. PFOS are the tobacco of the chemical industry, substances whose health effects were and are subject of decades-long corporate cover-up. This is not just a local issue, as you all know. It is a national and international problem. But what we seek from all of you is a deeper sense of commitment, an increased focus as to what steps can be taken, and to push back hard. All the roadblocks mentioned over and over and over like ping-pong balls, everybody finger-pointing, by Aqua, by state and regulatory officials. While adults and children are literally suffering and dying, Flint, Michigan is the tip of the iceberg, and it is here now. This threat is not distant. It is in our homes and in our backyards. This is a big deal. This is a really big deal, and it's really scary. And the only way to protect us is for all of us to know what is happening, and for all of us to get the numbers of these PFOSes out of our water down to non-detect. This is not simple, but it's vital. It's a vital task, and one that could label all of you guys amongst the most civic-minded Commissioners in the region. We are asking you to be our heroes and to be our protectors. I am, we are, asking the Commissioners to bring whatever influence the township can have on making certain that our water is safe, to help us advocate for Aqua, to put the correct filters on that will allow us to get to the lowest numbers possible. Non-detect is what we want. And please help us inform others so that they know what the situation is and how to protect ourselves. And what I also really want to know from someone, who knows what is happening in the hospitals? What are the number of PFOS in the hospitals, in the schools, and in the restaurants, and in the library? As our good friend Ben Franklin said, "Well done is better than well said." So let's get together and do everything we can to have clean water. And please continue to announce the Public Utilities Commission meeting coming up on November fourteenth, and it's on your website, I'm sure. Thank you all very, very, very much.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Anyone else from the public who wants to make a comment?
Joe Rozak.
Try to keep your comments within three, three, four minutes. Thank you.
Joe Rozak, in nineteen twenty-seven Susquehanna Road. Uh, I was impressed by your insistence as a commission to stick with an ordinance to have sidewalks for safety reasons. You have a vision, and you're following through with it, and there's a cost for that, cost being borne by Burger King or whatever. Likewise, you had a vision with the change in the zoning code. I'm surprised that you let this request for the change on the YMCA property get as far as it did. You have a vision for this township. Live with it. You live with the ordinance for your sidewalk. There is a vision. There's a reason you have that zoning code. I would hope you would keep that in mind. So far, I'm a little disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public?
Laura Lehman, fourteen thirty-one Bryant Lane, and yes, that's my thought, too. And I also feel like you voted against your constituents tonight. I think most of you actually know that, number one, they would not want to go to a hearing when you know that they were supposed to have the planning commission verdict first, and, number two, the, uh, meeting on the eighteenth, you know, I mean, that's literally something that no constituent would have voted for. That was a gift to a developer, to do that. And I, I think that what is really sad is to watch, you know, you have a lot of people in this township who feel like they're going to do, in fact, they say this to me all the time, they're going to do whatever they want to do. Why should I care? You know, we go and we try, and they do whatever they want to do. That should change. You, you really need to hear the people that you're serving. And these people have been through an entire year for the most important meeting, the hearing, where they can actually win everything or lose everything. To be literally a week before Christmas is really unconscionable. It's unconscionable. Again, not to put in the tools that they need is not acceptable. And I'd also like to, to deal with, um, I, I'm sure you will not chide me on saying this, because you didn't chide the other person that said this, but I think what Commissioner Myers said tonight was disgusting. Okay? She called what I said disgusting. That's not how you want us to talk, and that's how you let the Commissioner talk. But the issue is that Commissioner Myers has had in her possession and had discussions with me as well.
Ms. Lehman, no, no, no.
And had discussions with.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Closing comments?
Yes, and had discussions with me as well about all of those issues, which were highly important safety issues, and absolutely not one of them was addressed by anybody in this township with, including those who wanted to be able to help. And so, I just spoke with Mr. Schramm tonight, who professed not to know anything about the letter that you got about the fire department that I mentioned earlier. And that Commissioner Myers knows about it, and that those issues have not been addressed and changed in our fire department, is absolutely, that's disgusting. So, I don't want to use that word again, but I saw that she was not chided for it, and we would like to be treated the same way that you would like to be treated. So let's get back on a keel, where we speak respectfully, but when somebody asks about something very important, that there is an answer. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
And this comes, and this comes from a woman.
Any other, Commissioner Myers? Laura, could you please sit down? Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none, we'll have closing comments from Commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Bowman.
Just, uh, someone guy elected to a higher office who's among us. My congratulations to Ben. Good luck in January.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Zepone?
Just as a reminder, excuse me, to residents of Abington, our Artsley Community Association's holding its eighth annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony at the Artsley Community Center, December first, it's a Saturday, starting at five-thirty. We're going to have some surprises there. It'll be crafts, food, and what have you. So, it's open to all residents in Abington Township, and it's a free event.
Thank you. Commissioner Gillespie?
Thank you. First of all, remember Veterans Day, everyone, on the eleventh. Definitely take some time and pray for the veterans. Happy birthday to the Marine Corps. I have to say that. Mike would like that. And congratulations to the police officers. They did a wonderful job, and God bless those women that went through that. That really, really was an emotional presentation that they did, and I give them credit for sitting there and listening to that call. So, thank you, and have a good Veterans Day, everyone.
Thank you. Commissioner Veyney?
I want to thank the many, many members of the Police Department who came out to my town hall on the twenty-second. I do believe the streets of Glen Side were not being patrolled for about an hour there, but everything went fine. Again, really appreciate that and all you do every day. Also want to announce that the Kewsbuck Village Business Association is holding their annual holiday event on Sunday the second. I believe, sorry, just get the time up. I don't have the time. It's in the afternoon. I'll send it out by email. Thank you. That's all, that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Spiegelman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just want to remind everyone of the next Township Anything With a Plug Electronics Recycling Event is going to be held Saturday, November seventeenth, at nine AM to noon, and that is at the Township Yards on Florrie Lane, off of Easton Road, right across the street from the well-discussed Burger King. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Corriswell?
I just want to say congratulations to Spiegelman, sorry, to Spiegelman. Yes, we're trying to get rid of you already. I'm sorry.
You're not the only one.
Commissioner Sanchez, we're sorry to lose you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schreiber?
Thank you. Along with all the other holiday parties, there's also a block party at, um, on the same, I think it's the same day as Artsley, December first, from one to five. It's a little bit earlier in the day, and it's on Bradfield Road. We close off the road, all kinds of activities, so come out for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Um, sincere congratulations to Commissioner Sanchez.
Thanks. Thank you. I don't know what I would do without Commissioner Brodsky to put my button on, my volume button. Thank you. Sincere congratulations. You're entering a position that I once had the privilege of assisting and being an office manager for a state representative, so I know well the work that you have ahead of you, and most of it's wonderful, and a lot of it's challenging as well. So, my, my best to you. Um, I really, it, it pains me to have to say this. Certainly, Mrs. Lehman and I have had a very difficult and tumultuous relationship for many years, and several elections ago, and probably the start of this angst, was when Mrs. Lehman attempted to barter a deal with another candidate and trying to advance their candidacy by trying to make the deal to if they provided her with dirt on me, she would help them.
Commissioner Myers?
So, and it is not a lie.
Excuse me, Ms. Lehman. Commissioner Myers, closing, closing comments?
Liar is not one of them, and I would certainly not be saying this tonight if Mrs. Lehman had not gotten up and said.
Commissioner Myers?
I understand.
I know. Closing comments, please. You're just.
I am trying to.
Prolonging the agony here.
President Luker, there is no ending this, and we all know that.
Your time is up, Commissioner. Thank you. Commissioner Brodsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. So initially, Commissioner Sanchez, we wish you very much well in Harrisburg, and hearty congratulations on your recent victory. You have a lot of work ahead of us, but I am very confident, knowing you over these years, that you will represent just not Abington, but the one hundred and fifty-third Legislative District in its entirety, and you'll do well, do a great job with that. Having said that, congratulations. We invite you, as well as everyone else from the township and all the Commissioners, that Chabat of Abington is having their annual Hanukkah celebration, and there's two separate times when that's going to take place, one of them being Monday, December third, six-thirty at Willow Grove Park Mall, the second being Wednesday, December fifth, six-thirty. There will be a menorah lighting at Jenka Town Square. All are invited to attend. Happy Hanukkah. Comes early this year, but to all in the residents, and then thank the rest of the Commissioners for interesting evening this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothman?
First off, congrats, Ben. We're proud of you, and we wish you the best. I'd like to thank everybody who came out and voted, regardless of who you voted for or where you voted. It's important, and a shout-out to every single person that, that does that civic duty. We, we all take it very seriously. December fifteenth, the McKinley Fire Station will have the holiday party. I apologize to those, including those in the Sanchez residence that were ready to roll at the Halloween Party, which we canceled due to weather. I knew when we canceled it, it would turn out that the weather would be okay. But, uh, so apologies there. And, uh, that's all. Actually, one more thing. Thank you to our police officers, not only for, for what we celebrated tonight and great work done, but what you all do every single day. Tonight was a really emotional start to the night, and it really hits home. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothman. Commissioner Jimmy DePulcito?
Thank you, President Luker. Um, I echo the same sentiments. Chief Malloy, thank you for putting that presentation together, or, you know, the award presentation. I would actually, I wouldn't even call it an award presentation. I would call it an awareness presentation, and it was tastefully done. Thank you so much. Um, I'd also like to thank our, congrats, my colleague to the left here. You're going to be missed. So, what's, is it State Representative-elect?
Yes.
Okay.
Or Ben.
All right. Or Ben. Great. Congratulations, my friend. You will be missed. And, uh, as always, when driving through Abington Township, please drive like your kids live here.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, everyone, for the, the well wishes tonight and all the notes and, and kind messages I've gotten. It's, uh, truly heartwarming. I look forward to continuing to serve the residents of Abington, my hometown. I think everyone knows that is a very special thing for me to do, an honor. Look forward to doing that in a different capacity, but also working with all my colleagues and friends and everyone that, that, you know, I've made here in the, in the township. I think we can do some really great things by working together, rowing in the same direction, and, uh, you know, building up that infrastructure in the state grants, some of which we saw tonight. That will really help. And of course, there's parts of Upper Dublin in that, so I don't mean to slight anyone there. They'll be in the fold and welcomed, and we'll do good things for them. And wanted to thank all the voters. It was really reassuring. And also, I do have one of my opponents here. There was actually a three-way race. Mr. Bazaka was the Libertarian candidate in the race. Thank you, sir, for, for voicing those views and, and being a gentleman throughout everything. That was appreciated. And again, thank you very much, everyone. Truly heartwarming.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez. Commissioner Thompson?
Just a reminder that, uh, Public Utility Commission will be him, or, holding hearings on Aqua Pennsylvania's rate increase that they've applied for. Uh, the first hearing will be November fourteenth, which is next Wednesday, one PM, at the Montgomery County Community College, and the second one will be Thursday, November fifteenth, at six PM over at Upper Dublin High School. So, please come out, make your voices heard, and push back on the rate increase that they're proposing. Also, Ben, congratulations. Abington is in great hands, and we look forward to seeing you serve.
Thank you, sir. Vice President Klein?
Thank you, President Luker. First, I'd like to say congratulations to Ashley. And second, I would like to say congratulations to Commissioner Sanchez, State Representative-elect. Do me a favor in the, in the aftermath of the two, two most recent events, the one in Pittsburgh, which hit pretty hard with me and personally, and also the events in California just last night. Do something about gun, gun laws and gun, gun, and responsible gun. Please, do your powers up in the state. I know, I know this is not a stretch for you.
Absolutely.
I know it's, it hits you right same place, so please do something about that. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. Ben, congratulations. Job well done, well deserved. You've done a great job, and we're going to miss you, but I think you're going to do exceptionally well in your new position. Thank you. Chief Malloy, thank you very much. Could you extend all our thanks to Sergeant Kent and the entire platoon for job well done, and happy Veterans Day to the veterans. And if there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you all for attending.